I am the Speaker of the United States of America. President Trump, President Sanders, one nation, we should have here not even a little liberty to have this for all.
Hey. Jay Jay Paul, President. Don Bensky. Richard Dory.
Stewart.
Aaron Chee. Kennedy, Eric Bauer, Patrick, Frank.
No, it's Jim online. Is there anybody online?
Okay. Oh, anyone else?
Oh, no, it's not. Coach, Megan Sheena. Jim, are you there?
You're there, Jim?
Let's go ahead with item one, three A, three A five sixteen Stanley Road.
Yes, Tom Cho.
Evening, my name is Tom Cho. Resident of Winthrop, built several duplexes on the Stanley Road, seven of them. And I'm proposing to build a number eight. It is across the street from five, five, three and five, four, seven Stanley Road. It's just beyond where the snowmobile trail crosses the road, if you're familiar with where it is. It's a thirty nine acre parcel of property that I've had for a number of years. And I've got a septic design that is done by Steve Robbins and I've gone to Mark Arsenal, the code officer here in Winthrop, and applied for a building permit. And the reason I'm here, I guess, is it's within the watershed district of Carlton Stream, which comes in back of it. But the big point I want to make is that the building structure is going to be about three hundred feet uphill or to the east of the Stanley Road. And that grade goes gradually towards the Stanley Road, so it's going away from this stream that is in concern. So all the water would drain towards the Stanley Road, and I'm proposing a silt fence. I'm gonna have John Cushion do the construction, I've used him before, he does a great job, for retaining any type of phosphorus or any type of runoff. And it's gonna be a minimal blueprint. I've already cleared the lot and the driveway area. Can't say what the square footage is, but it's, the building is gonna be twenty eight by ninety five. But I'm just basically clearing the area for the structure and for the septic. And I can't remember what the septic design was, it was probably like twenty by forty, I think, bed system.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Little bit, stream is, yeah, the back of. Almost two thousand feet. The stream runs about thousand, maybe eleven hundred feet, pushing well away.
I am, yes.
So the side setback.
I think the side setback is probably ten feet, I'm gonna be fifty feet with the system.
I didn't know that was.
That's to the septic, and in the building is probably a hundred and fifty feet from the sideline. No, and like I say, if you, if you walk into that site from the Stanley Road, you're walking gradually uphill into the site.
Yeah, no, I see why. Gonna be done.
For now, I mean, I. What's that?
You could be adding, like.
Without going through subdivision, I have to wait another five years and I, I don't have any plans, but my son's here tonight, he, he might change his mind, I have no idea, I've, I have no plans at this point to build anything other than what I'm proposing.
Yes, my point.
Well, the dimensions are twenty eight by ninety five.
You know. Plan for down here, not here.
Right, let's, I just put those dimensions on there.
What we get out of that is a fish.
What is it, what is it we're looking for? She's been ill and trying to communicate, I did have one brief communication and she said this sketch, which I just brought in, and it has all the dimensions that this gentleman just asked for are on that sketch. It's right there on the thing, it's twenty eight by ninety five. It's a ranch with a six twelve pitch and a dormer with a garage in the middle. I've built seven buildings there. Drive by, you can see them. I have architectural drawings now, I can, I can provide for you. Oh, yeah, no, I have a whole architectural layout of every, everything. Absolutely, yeah, I can bring that into Dawn or to Mark. Yeah, that's no problem at all. It's all on the architectural drawing of the building and the, the, the plot is gonna be no different than the drawings I just gave you. The measurements are what I put on the paper. But I have a whole sketch of the architectural drawing of the building. Keegan, you have anything to say?
I guess these are. So I can, I can do it with, with the buildings or installations that we have a mention drawing and our. It's possible, given the dimensions that we have, the location of water body, the impact, even if that building was, you know, on the side, but you know, we probably would be after. There's very little that we would say as far as the impact, it's nowhere near the water source so far away, that the only reason it's there is a thousand way. So that's the only reason, let's keep. So for us in this case, I don't think a more detailed dimension drawing would be needed, but I do agree with Dawn that it should package, just so we have it. Case there is, you know, reason to go subdivision later or some question, it's just mixing who, of what we approve. Okay, that's, that's, that's it, I mean, and even that drawing, it's fine, what we approved, the dimensions of the buildings, but if he's got the actual, actual architectural drawings, others, question that was added, or a copy of them added, just so. No, I, I don't, I don't see that, from my perspective, I don't see anything that those could add as far as from where this application asks. So that should apply my consensus. Regardless of what it was, okay. I will make a motion. I know. We want to do completion first, okay. So we will make a, make a motion that case number twenty four dash twenty four five sixty eight Stanley Road is complete for what we need to make our decisions on.
Betty's in favor.
Oh, Betty's online. Billy's on volume.
I heard that.
Currently, we have, we've indicated the application's complete with the additions that Greg added, which will be added to your file. So that's a layout of the.
Architectural drawing.
Building and the lot. That needs to be in the file. So I'm now entertaining a motion for accept approval of the application.
I could make that. So I would make a motion that case number twenty four dash twenty four five sixty eight Stanley Road, map nine, lot forty. Thomas Choet, conditional use permit application to allow earthwork of greater than twenty five cubic yards in conjunction with the construction of two family residents in the public water zone be approved with the following stipulation that, and the architectural drawings are included with the package and either that existing dimensional or new dimensional drawing is included to show the side setbacks and road setbacks, just so we know the placement of the hill. I'll be in room.
Good. All right, excellent, hey, thank you very much, appreciate it, appreciate your time.
Again, you understand, again, you understand those, those requirements before Mark signs the application. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is item B seventy seven Turtle Run Road. The intent tonight was to review what you have to offer, then see what the board has for questions. And then we go forward from there. I don't think the expectation was a application, you know, expectation tonight.
Yeah, just general question.
Correct, fact finding, I believe, is that right?
I got a bunch of them.
I like this one that we would want to do a site.
It's way. Yeah. That was tough, yeah. I had to pull it up on the map. Get everything, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out the drawings, so if you go online mapping. I do not.
What's up? Ken, go ahead. Yep, good evening, my name's Ben Murray, I'm with AE Hudson Engineers in Waterville. And yes, it's, we submitted this a little while ago and Dawn got back to us with some comments, list of comments, and we've worked through those, one of the comments that Dawn had was she wanted to see the draft of the condo docs. We're still waiting for that, from the lawyers that we have engaged, and so we haven't made a formal submission back to Dawn with all her comment responses yet. But I do have the plan and definitely can go over questions. It's a, this is a condo conversion project for, for Mill Stewart Realty, they own the Marina White Duck back in two thousand nineteen, we did another, excuse me, condo conversion on Turtle Run Road down the street, six cabins that Shay purchased, and we did a condo conversion, we, they sold those off separately as well. Similar project, larger number of dwelling units on this, for this project. So right now, the, the site consists of a two story motel as well as separate cabins throughout the site, and some of the separate buildings have three to four units in each building. They are rented out as part of, of the cabins, part of the lakeside motel. What they are looking to do is a condo conversion on these units, so it's really a change of ownership. Instead of being rented out as individual units, they're going to be sold and the people will be buying the unit itself, and then the rest of the land will be all into a condo association or be all common area that anyone that's part of the association can use. And it would be all under condo docs agreements, rules that they have to follow. The plan itself has some easements on it that I can explain. We are actually decreasing the number of total dwelling units on the site. Right now, the hotel, I believe, has twenty two units in them as part of this conversion. We're going to be taking walls in between every other unit and making only twelve units to make them larger. So there'll be larger units that we sold off as condos. Not part of this process now, but in the future, as people buy these, they'll be most likely renovating them into these larger units, and that will trigger building permits and, and all that. As far as the condo conversion right now, we're not proposing any new buildings, no new impervious area. It's just a change of ownership style for the property. I can come up and explain features of the plan. Absolutely.
Singing, singing?
No, no, no singing tonight, Mark. Yeah?
Everybody's.
Yeah. So I'll point out a few markers to get your bearings. This is the motel right here. That will have the twelve units in it, this is the office area, has the cafe, has the, the fish, equipment store, and it has a unit up above, it's two stories. These are individual cabins here. This is a larger structure here that has four dwelling units in it now. And then along Island Park Road, we have an existing structure here that has three units in it now. Another structure here that has three units. And then two individual structures down here with individual units. Obviously, we, we've shown the, all the dock system that's there currently. That will be retained by and operated by the Marina itself. So the Marina will have, this hatch area represents an easement that the, the Marina will have as part of the condo association, so the Marina will have an easement for this whole area here as well as a ten foot easement along the entire shoreline for access to docks in the shoreline. We also have another easement here, this path. As you know, a lot of people that go to the Marina Park across the street, so that is going to give them a dedicated path here to access the shoreline from across the road. Other than that, everything you see here is gonna be common area, so anyone in these units will have access to this open space. We do have a couple of areas that we call limited common areas or elements. Only have a few of them here, some of that is the parking spaces, so we've designated a parking space for every single unit that is here. And they are all enumerated to the number of the dwelling unit. But we also have areas like out on the shoreline side that are limited common areas per, for units, like this one oh one here is a limited common area for unit one oh one, so that area is a space where they can set up their own picnic table, chairs, whatnot, and it's an area where it's common, but it's limited to that unit, so that means basically it's on their own private area out of the common area. So you'll see that we have in the back of these units here, we also have some areas that are marked L C E. Those are limited common areas for these units here, so like in the back of this unit, if they wanted to set out a a picnic table for themselves, that will give them a private spot to do so. I'm sure a lot of questions, so go ahead and fire away.
You do these, are you, like the ones that don't have kitchens? Are you renovating and putting kitchens in and stuff, or with the person purchasing? Each condo?
They would be responsible for that, correct? They're buying a footprint, basically. So in addition to the site plan, we have a, eight or nine drawings of each individual cabin. So they buy, buy pretty much the perimeter outside of each cabin. And then they can go and renovate the interior of it to whatever they like.
So an existing motel, you said it, but.
Yeah. I believe it's twelve.
Six up top, six on the bottom?
I'll say it, one, two, three. Twelve, yeah, there is, on the bottom, there's one, two, three, four, five, and then seven up top.
Two levels, right?
Two levels, correct. No, they are, they're on each floor, so you buy one, it's, it's one level. And you buy, so you'll have another unit upstairs that someone else buys, so side to side. Correct. Correct.
So you're basically taking all out between.
Yeah. Right.
You're not changing anything at all on the outside, exactly as it's.
Right.
It's just the interior knocking down a wall, basically.
Right.
And then they expand each one at home.
Because right now, they're small, you know, they're very small.
Some of them.
Right. Exactly, so they want to give the people more space, be able to put, you know, a kitchen if they wanted to, and then, so that will give them the opportunity to do that. Yeah, that will stay, this whole utility area that will be common on the first floor. That will stay.
So the first floor, we're getting the outside ground level area or whatever they want.
Exactly, exactly. Correct.
Go ahead, I might, might.
Yeah, I was just wondering, were the existing docks.
Yeah, right here, these, the, these lines here illustrate the existing docks. Yeah, I've, I've done some updating since Dawn's comments, so this is actually the updated plan, but it's, it's a lot more detail, so like this dock here is a fueling dock, and this dock here and all the slips, and then there's also a dock down here as well. And another easement that I hadn't explained yet, they're, they're gonna have a twenty foot easement from that shoreline up through here, that is gonna be for the white duck. So if you had people come in on boat on this dock, they'll be able to walk up through to the white duck. Yeah. Right, that's run by the Marina as well. So they got a easement for that entire dock system as well as a fifteen foot easement along the shore. No, it goes with the Marina.
Okay, they'll have to rent it off.
Yeah, yeah, they can rent this lip or, yeah, yeah.
For them to have access to the dock. They have to purchase that right, and that allows them access to that right away.
Yeah, anyone that purchases a, a unit here has full access to the docks, but where the the lakeside might not necessarily be a unit owner in the future, we gave them a full easement along the shoreline as well. That makes sense.
So you're, you're separating out the original house?
Yes.
To be two condos or just one condo and then all?
Two, there's upstairs and downstairs, unit two is upstairs and unit one is the entire first floor.
Which is where you're talking?
All right, here, sir.
The office.
Yeah, yeah, unit one will be the entire first floor of the office. And then unit two, there's a door on the side here with a stair, and it'd be the entire second floor. Still in that building. Yeah. Absolutely. Yeah. Right. They will be part of the condo association for sure, yeah. The office space here, yeah, there'll be a, there'll be part of it. The, the operation of the Marina itself is, is a separate entity, that's why we did the, the easement. But they will most likely be the ownership of the first floor unit itself. Yeah, yeah, I think it will be, I can clarify that for you, but with Travis and Zach.
So first, this is a change, I guess this will be a change of use. And it's, not really, but it's gonna change the occupancy. So right now, the property does not meet the department ordinance that have. So if we're going to allow this to change, we would have to grandfather that in and say we're gonna allow that.
Me and, Dawn and I talked about that, and the consensus was these units are going to be second homes. She says, and we, we agreed, if they maintain a second, second homes, it's not a change of use. Now, if these were to become primary residences, then it would dictate a change of use, and we'd have to meet other requirements for the change of use. But the understanding is that this is all second occupancy buildings as it is now. That was something that would have to be monitored, it's gonna be in the, the condo docs as part of the language that they would have to adhere to. And.
Delegated it.
Right. Right. Right, right.
Yeah, certainly, it'd probably make better sense to, unless there was other plans for the. Little island block.
Right, we're trying to.
They're already well beyond the impervious cover, they cannot cut out of it. They're way beyond the limit, they're almost fifty percent of the property.
Probably enough, that little island there is very wooden, that I always knew of. I'm not even sure how most of those trees have been removed.
Saying, given that this is entirely in the shoreline zone, they can't touch a tree on it.
Yeah.
They can't.
No, no.
Yeah.
It's already been.
Right.
There's already trees missing.
I'm saying it's grandfathered at whatever impervious cover zone it's at, we allow.
So we can't say even if it's been.
Right, we would not have to, we don't have to force them back to the twenty percent standard. We can, they can stay where they're at, but they cannot add any more. So that's my concern with parking is if it isn't there now.
I mean, it it technically is there now. I mean, it's not, it's like dirt, isn't it, is it dirt?
This this here?
Across the road.
Across the road?
Across Turtle Run.
Yeah, that's.
Across the road wouldn't wouldn't necessarily.
Yeah, it's not really.
There may be additional parking over there and that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's really, yeah, that can be part of the condo association and all.
Okay, so.
Oh, that's not going to be.
No, not at all, no, just just this parcel here.
So parking was parking was a little bit of a concern. Uh my second concern is almost the entire property is in the flood. So it's in the hundred-year flood, so uh my challenge is, I've run into this at work. If where condominium associations didn't have that in their write-ups. So what happens is somebody floods, FEMA now has a no-grandfathered policy, right? So if you're more than sixty percent damaged, you get a one-time payout, you can never have a mortgage again. So a lot of people choose to elevate so they can have a mortgage. When you have shared walls in that building, the way that motel is constructed, I don't know how you'd be able to jack up a couple of units, beat the other units down. So I would say my one concern is any shared building has to have that written in the condominium association. Is that if any of the individual units go beyond the sixty percent, the entire structure needs to be lived. Not part of it, and that is nasty to the owners, but that's the reality. Because otherwise you'd say that these properties could never get flood insurance. So and that would be unfair to the people that bought theirs, assuming they could actually get it.
Yep.
So that's, that was kind of a concern is where the flood plain is. Um you need to elevate the entire structure. Instead of, and I'm not as worried about individual structures, they could elevate those, those are standalone, they have separate wall. It's really the shared walls, that's a big problem, it's other New England where they have shared walls. And they don't have that clearly defined. Um and especially with FEMA's new rules, it's it's a big concern. So I would want to make sure to protect the the owners to make sure that they understood what they were kind of going into.
Okay, yeah.
They can't, they can't go fix, they can't go adjust that later.
Yeah, we definitely add that language into the documents, good point.
And my second, my next question, I guess, is uh possible expansion. You know, we allow, you know, you can't change out the impervious cover, but you can expand your building. I don't know what the date, the last time this was expanded. And can each, I'm assuming that they probably can expand, it's pretty old, right? It's been there for a while and I don't know if it's been added or not. But I guess the question would be if they're individual dwellings and they were asking for expansion. How would you, how would we be able to prove or accommodate that? That's more maybe a question for the board. Like, I'm not sure if unit one oh three says, I want to use my thirty percent expansion. How did they do that and the other units, or do they get to expand a lot more? It it would be thirty, it's thirty percent per unit if they're individual unit, it's for the whole building. So. Is it first-in wins, like unit one oh one gets a big wing? Yeah. Okay. So it's, so the way the verbiage is, it's it's for the structure, the thirty percent expansion is for the structure. Okay.
And depending on when it's built, sorry, did that, it's, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know either, that was kind of the question was, how do we manage that?
But wouldn't that increase the purpose there?
Well, if they didn't, if they went into the parking lot, it'd be fine. They can't expand, they'd have to take away parking, yeah, they'd have to take away parking. You're right, they cannot expand the impervious cover, they haven't taken away from somewhere. But I just wanted to ask about that, the standalone buildings, they're standalone buildings, they can expand those. But, you know, assuming they're individual.
The late eighties or the early ninety.
So if that's the case, then would have.
Then they probably used it, yes, that's probably it.
Square footage, uh square footage body too.
Yeah. But that would be good if you if you checked into that for us, uh just to make sure. Because if they've already used their expansion, then it wouldn't be a concern, because they don't be allowed to expand that building. Again, the individual ones, we could do on a case-by-case basis, it's more how we would react. If somebody came in and said, I want to expand unit one oh one, how would we be able to? Well, if they went into their parking space and somehow we, I don't know, I mean, I get right, I I I. I'm not saying, I'm just, I'm just just theorizing, that was, that was just a concern about how they would balance that.
Yeah, that's a good point, I mean, I can see it, we've we've done it down down the road with some of those cabins, you know, expanded them. And they've taken advantage of the the thirty percent for sure. Um different scenario where they're individual cabins, but you know, in this in this model here with this motel, again, not very um. Easy to expand, I get, the only, you're right, the only way would to go would be to the rear of the of the building. And that just opens up a can of worms with parking and, yeah.
I'm not saying it doesn't change a whole lot of other things, I'm just, I'm just.
Good point.
Some people to say that's what they want, that's what they want.
Yeah.
So we could, I just don't want to, I I don't want to pit homeowners against each other now that they're independent.
Yeah, right.
Um my only other question was, so you have this dock system and the Marina is going to be maintaining that easement. Um and I guess just is, how is that going to be linked to the association? So in other words, the condo association is there, but they technically don't really have access to the water. Because the easement's going to be, or is it a shared?
So they have access, absolutely, to the shore, but it's just giving uh the Marina easement, right?
Okay.
Access.
Well, they would, they would own, so is the whole shorefront going to be part of the condominium association?
Yes, absolutely.
So if they lived in one of the back buildings, they could still use.
Yeah, absolutely, the entire, the entire property would part be part of the condo association. I mean, there may be a point where the um Marina doesn't have an office here and they're operating independently. So that gives them access, easement access to the to the docks and to the shoreline in the future. So.
Yeah, I saw the sit, the the water easement there that goes through the parking lot. Um and that's always, you know, a concern, you can't necessarily build anything on it. They come in and want to rip up their line, they come in and rip up their line.
Right.
So. I just, I I was just thinking about expansion in ways to be changed, but. But no, those are, those are kind of my 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 big questions were just, you know, the flood plain was a big one, how are we going to make sure to deal with that?
So.
And the expansion, I think I would, my list.
All right, thank you.
This is Betty. I have a question. Yeah, I have a, I have a question. Um couldn't you put restrictive covenants in the documents and therefore it would take care of a lot?
Excuse me, let, my, yeah, let let us finish with the board and then we'll ask for public input. Oh, that's Betty, I'm sorry, Betty. Dawn was asking a question, Betty, I'll get right back, I'll get right back here, Betty. You hear me all right, Betty?
I can.
Betty, can you? Yeah, okay, I'm gonna let Dawn finish and I'll go to you.
My question was the individual buildings, okay. Uh will be individually owned, if it's floodplain?
Well, the only combined one was in the upper right, which wasn't in the flood. The only other one other than the motel, I think they were all separate standalone structure. At least they were on the little truck.
And they're not in that.
Well, some of them are, but they're standalone buildings, the only combined building that I saw in the floodplain. Floodplain kind of goes, it basically goes. It starts up in here, this entire area is flooded and it goes down and cuts into a couple of these buildings. So this whole corner was out of the flow, so that shared unit wouldn't be a factor.
This one would be.
Is that one?
Yeah, that's going to be the the house, the original house.
Oh, there's two units there, you're right, yes, so it would be a concern for that.
Would be the same. The rest of them, even though there's more than one unit in them, they're above the flood.
Yeah, go to the upper right, they're not in the floodplain, so it would not be, they can get flood insurance whether without, there's no, there's no requirement. So it's the big thing is that federal requirement, if you have a federal mortgage federally backed, you must have flood insurance.
Somebody can buy one of those units as it exists.
Yep.
And they don't have to have flood insurance.
No, if you own it outright, you don't have to have flood insurance. But if you want a mortgage, you have to have flood insurance. But if you've, but if it's ever damaged more than sixty percent and you have flood insurance, it's ever damaged more than sixty percent, you cannot rebuild. And you can, you can rebuild, but you can never get flood insurance again. And the problem being a shared building, how does that work? You know, that's, that's the concern is if one unit's damaged by sixty percent, the entire structures, you know, basically to them, nobody could get insurance. And that's where it could be weird if there are multiple units.
Doesn't, doesn't work out on individual units?
It's, it's strange because of, it does, but the only way to get out of that is to elevate. And you can't elevate half a structure because it's a shared wall, like you you can't, you can't elevate that building easily. I'm not saying you can't do it, you can engineer anything, right? But it would be very expensive and very, very hard to elevate a piece of that structure. So the issue would be is if one of those was more than sixty percent damaged, they would say that building, that person can no longer get flood insurance. What happens to the rest of them? And the only way they could ever get flood insurance again would be to elevate. So that's where you're kind of leaving everybody in the lurch, where you're saying, okay, this, we could never get flood insurance again. Maybe that's okay, I've seen some of these, I mean, I'm I'm talking like a full-on like hundred-page document just about how they deal with the floodplain in a condominium association. So these are big investigations and you want to have it all written down. That's all something I wanted to make sure you're aware of and it needs to be written down.
Sure.
That was, my big question was what happens when this happens, what happens when this happens? FEMA regulations are somewhere around seven thousand pages now. So and there's a lot of, yeah, there's a lot of big service and parts and pieces in them. So I just wanted to, that combined structure is the only problem. And so it'll be the big building and the one to the upper left if it's two separate units.
Yeah, that one's elevated quite a bit, I I wonder where that is relative to the.
The floodplain, the ground is up, if the building is elevated, you could, you know, get a low sea and be done and like, we're out anyways.
Yeah.
But the big building, I'm pretty sure is in because it's pretty low.
I'll see if there's any long was on that area that's done the best. I'll do.
Betty, go ahead. Well, the new maps are coming out next year.
What I wanted to say was that I believe that if you put in some restrictive covenants, that may take care of some of the situations we've been talking about.
Yeah, we can.
That's my two cents.
Yeah, to the underdogs, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I just, you know, I thought this wasn't an approval, we're just sitting here kind of trying to help you out. And these are just things that, 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 yeah, things that hopefully we could, we could address. Yeah.
Want to say something? Okay.
Do, but go ahead.
Um just a quick thought on this, is there any, I know the property very well. Is there any thoughts of helping with erosion control on the shore? Because you know as well as I know, there's not much going on there right now. Is there any thoughts to it, assuming we know that this is going to be the Marina's eas- easement? And maybe having a little responsibility towards proactively setting up some better erosion control before other people buy the.
What'd you call that, Mark? What'd you call it, what's your initials for that, control?
And so what they're doing, I go.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, there's no, no proposed changes right now, but we know a new ownership. Um what may happen, I don't know, obviously they're going to be, we're going to have language in there that has to, that. To protect the the shoreline, so uh we wouldn't want a new owner owner coming in there and making drastic changes, uh obviously to. To impact the lake, uh definitely open to any suggestions uh there for uh helping stabilize that shoreline, uh if that's a concern. Um none is proposed right now. Uh but definitely open to ideas, concerns.
Actually, to the board, site visit, just so you could see that part of it, because I think that would be a really good, good thing for you guys to propose to do.
Was it bare, bare soil now?
Oh, it's just there, I mean, there's a couple of trees here and there, um and maybe a little bit of shrubbery, but it's like flat land.
It's very flat, that's why the floodplain goes so far.
Yeah.
It's it's really flat.
And it's, it's like from where, well, there's a balcony above with like where you can walk on like little deck area. I don't think the roof slopes down that way, though. I could be wrong, but I mean, there's got to be some stuff with the the roof with the um.
Well, gutters and infiltration drains and things like that, it's great. If the bank is, if the shore itself is is fine sediments, you know, riprap is a great solution because you're going to stabilize it. Um keep the fines from moving from wave action, things like that. And then, you know, you could try to put in some type of a, you know, nearshore filter drain or something like that.
Yeah.
Uh but definitely controlling any runoff from the parking lots and from the building itself.
Yeah.
Right now, I don't think, I mean, to me, I didn't make any notes because there were no changes to the outside. So that's really.
Yeah, I don't think we could say.
I don't think we could say, we're, we're approving the change of use, not the change.
Or ownership to other people, amazingly awesome, responsible thing for the company to do, I think, for the lake.
I can talk to the, I can talk to the owners about that for sure.
Hi, Jeff. Okay, um just looking at the documents, I'm looking at the deeds. In several places, as different parcels are uh signed over, is repeats two sentences. Said premises other than for family use are restricted to use for summer or tourist accommodations, that's an deed. And then it says, said premises shall not be used for purposes of selling or serving food, intoxicating liquors or other beverages of any kind. And and again, if I'm reading it right, that's an deed throughout on different parcels. I don't know what that means to what you're trying to do, but I would think number one would be value restricted. And this was not, this is not our approval, it's it's in the deed.
I think that comes back into where these are second homes um as well, keeping under that same restriction.
It reads, said premises other than for family use are restricted to use for summer or tourist accommodations.
Where's that at?
Uh it's, under deeds.
Yeah.
Exhibit A. It talks about the different parcels of land being transferred. Says first parcel, second parcel. It has those sentences in it, um fifth parcel. Has it in it? Did I see you in the drawing both?
Yeah, I've seen it.
For me, that's, that needs to be in the equation, I mean, that goes back to the deed.
Yep.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Absolutely.
Somehow, however you form your.
Signs to all for year-round buildings, they're not just summer buildings. So.
Understand that, but I'm saying the deed says you can't do other than this, that's what I'm saying.
Right, I mean, yeah, the, the one on the very last page right at the top says specifically, shall not be used to the purpose of selling. Uh services, uh selling or serving food or intoxicating liquors or other beverages to persons other than said travelers or turns. I don't know, how people regulate, but I, you know, I'm guessing that's kind of the idea was a bed for breakfast where you serve the people that stay there and know I'm publicly. So it's trying to be small-scale like that.
I understand that, but sentence one is the one that caught my eye.
Restriction.
Okay, um. I'm looking now at, in the document, if you look at uh second, third page in. You got the table of content, condo membership subdivision permit. You're getting into the checklist required submissions. Item one, you've submitted that, right? That's what this is, correct, it's it's called. Correct. It's, it's called the condominium plan, uh, REC one.
Yeah.
And you've attached it. Soul test, you want to waive that? Erosion control plan, you want to waive that? And that gets into what you're talking about, Jamie. Storm management waiver is requested for that. Phosphorus control, a waiver is requested for that. And I have input from. Bill McGonigal, um.
Bill McGonigal.
Bill McGonigal, yeah. And his, his, uh. Main point throughout is the phosphorus. Uh, part of it, and so. Keep in mind, Carbon City Watershed is looking for that information. Um, nitrate concentration waiver, asking for waiver there. Um, based on the fact you have a public sewer. What's your reaction to that?
You know, again, they're not changing the existing. So if they were making any changes to the outside, I feel like everything's back on the table. But if they're not changing the outside, they're just asking for a change in use. I feel like we'd be, maybe it's just me, but I feel like we'd be overstepping to say. Oh, you know, I, I like Jamie's idea to at least ask and say, hey, maybe there's things you could do, but. To require that seems. You know, seems like it'd be inappropriate because they're not addressing the outside.
Item seven. This is third page in from the.
Checklist for required submissions. He just did number six.
Seven traps. Which one? Which one?
Um, so the nitrate.
Yeah, go ahead.
Being connected to public sewer. What if these people do want to add on? Because some of these little cabins just have bathrooms. What if they need to add on kitchens and more sinks is public sewer? Do they need to look at it to make sure for, for them, or I don't know if you would do that on your own. If people want to change it, is everything up to snuff in order to expand for all these individual units if they want to add anything?
That would be, that would be. With their facilities, their sewer.
Okay.
So if, if they were going to increase bedroom or anything offensive like that, you. Need to go see them and ask them permission to make sure that the system.
Okay.
Well, that ought to be no one up front, you know, purchase, I would.
Right, maybe not for us, but.
But the motel is gonna be, I mean, to me, the motel is gonna be, you know, twelve units, not twenty-four.
Yeah.
So I would think, I would think your load would go down. They're keeping the same laundry area, so. I just, me thinking about it, I would think your load, your, your load would go down.
Yeah.
So.
Oh, and that could actually tie in.
It would tie into the whole service of, of what their capacity is.
Yeah.
Seven, are you done with that?
Yes, sir.
Number seven, traffic study. Uh, asking for a waiver there, solid waste disposal, a waiver there. Letter from the wa, uh, Winthrop Water District. Uh, request due to the cabins already being connected, and that's the discussion we just had. Financial technical ability. Oh, by the way, there was a point from Dan. At the water district. Uh, did you have that one? Yeah. Regarding the duplex on Stanley Road. Okay, alright, we didn't tell him that one. Okay, moving right along, um. Financial and technical ability, a waiver is questioned because of, um, version to condominium is only property ownership change. Let up in the engineer waiver requested due to property not having, not proposing municipal roads. Evidence of road ownership and road maintenance. I would guess that would be in your covenants for.
Right, it would be a part of our, our documents, the maintenance of the, the small road and parking lots that we have, yes.
And I believe the only part we would need to deal with is like the subdivision we just looked at. Is that going to become a public road? And I don't think any of the public roads are gonna change here. Right, I mean, that's, what's public is gonna stay public, what's private is gonna stay private, and that's your responsibility.
So what you're saying is the, the road going by is public.
Yes.
And all the other property and packing and.
Is, is all the.
I weighed all that is private by the condominium.
Not our responsibility, yeah.
I understand.
Can I question number ten? If we are talking about the deeds, which I understand deeds aren't our deal. Without a technical and financial ability, does that any way tie in? To us?
Yeah, I'm not even sure what our purview is as far as the condominium association.
Yeah.
What they require, don't require for annual dues. It's like, I don't think we get.
We don't get them.
We, we wouldn't get into how much they pay for their.
Well, no, I mean, like the deed said, the tourists and summer residents.
It could be, but.
Does that have, that's what I meant.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I think it's up, up to the, the designers to figure out what that means, the deed and. And make sure it's covered.
Right, and that's where the title attorney has to be able to rewrite that deed. That's not, I, I don't view that as our problem, I view that as their problem.
And again, we're trying to give you a heads up on what we see.
Yeah.
So where was I, Jamie?
Sorry, I think you're at twelve.
We just went through twelve, yeah.
Yep, okay, thirteen? Farmers guaranteed.
Yeah, there's no.
So. Um, I've given you feedback going down the list of concerned of different parties.
Appreciate that.
Uh, and just my curiosity, what is the LCE?
That is the, uh, limited common element. That is the area, limited common element. So that is a common area that is limited to other people of the condo association. So again, that would be an area out in front of. Like one oh one, or it would be restricted to their use.
Is that in the legend? Is it in the legend?
Is it in the legend? No, I can put it in the legend though.
Be a good idea.
Yep.
Keep somebody, somebody else from going nuts trying to find.
Sure, sure. Yep.
Anybody else online that wants to contribute?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, Betty. You have your feedback.
Yep.
I appreciate it, um. Now, obviously I'm coming back, um. To a, uh, future meeting here with. Um, the items that Don brought up as well as been brought up here this evening. Would that be, uh, an adequate time to do public hearing, or are we thinking that's beyond whatever this next meeting is?
Given all the questions, I would suggest one more time before we go to public.
I know Don has, I think, sent a, uh, email to Golden Clark too.
I got that one, I did, yep, that's the DEB.
Yep.
So I, I think it behooves us with the complexity that we do one more like this. And then, uh, the board can decide if they're ready to do. Uh, creature of application, we can at least do that without the public and then there, to develop. That makes sense to you?
Yep, yep.
I mean, technically it's not a creature of application, it's some. Question, so.
We wouldn't do that tonight.
Right.
Possibly could do it the next phase.
Are you, um, are you still doing two meetings, uh, a month?
We won't do, we won't do a second with this one, but.
Right.
We don't have anything.
No, I'm looking at that first January one.
Would anybody else be interested in a site visit?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I.
Something like that.
We could do it like we've done before, the next time he's on the delta, and say, let's meet there at six.
Or.
Go there for half an hour, whatever, and then we come back.
You open up it. It's gonna be dark, but.
Yeah.
Well, you give us a heads up, a little, give us, well, you will anyway, to Donald.
Make sure you're talking to Dawn and just indicate to Dawn that we mentioned doing a site visit. If she doesn't think that it's, if we need to see it in light, if there's not enough.
Saturday, that's what we decided.
We, yeah, I was gonna say, we, yeah.
We decided.
Yeah.
So just work with Dawn on that. Bring your snowshoes.
It'll be a short site visit.
Fishing after, it'll be great.
You get out, you get in.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds tropical.
Yeah.
Alright, I appreciate, I appreciate the feedback.
I hope we were helpful.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Alright, moving on down the agenda. On workshop. First item on there was the status of zoning ordinance amendments. Um, as I understand it, Mark, you jumped in, as I understand it. She has submitted it to colon for review, which we don't have yet. Obviously, the, um. The council approved it, uh, last week. Uh, thank, thank to everyone that was able to come and help us out with that. Uh, actually went quite well, once we get all the questions answered. Uh, move right along. And I, I want to clear up something in the beginning of the meeting. Someone's drawn that meeting. Uh, Shannon, the chair, had a question about. Um, let me back up. She had a question before the meeting about campsites, five thousand versus a thousand square foot. On the water, off the water. And that came up the day of the meeting. And so what Dawn and I decided to do is take it forward. And, uh. Even though the board had not made a formal. Approval process of it. Um. And in talking, I said, well, what if that comes up? And Dawn assured me that the council or informed me that the council could change anything anyway.
Right.
Uh, they have that authority, so. What I didn't want the plant, the planning board to think that we were trying to do something that wasn't approved by the planning board. And so that night of the meeting, I took the, the, uh. Root that when Shannon, she asked that question. Do you have to take it back and get it approved? And my, my answer was no, because you have the authority to change it. And so we went forward with it. Uh, it, it seemed to fit with the approval process. And so, uh. Dawn and I made that judgment to, to do that. I hope you're okay with that.
And plus it's state minimum anyway, so it's. They said it's the state minimum, that was.
I, I understand, it's, it's a given, it, it's, it's well documented and all that, but the board hadn't technically had.
Yeah, I know the first meeting, I was able to listen in. And I was trying to chat with you guys. I was sending stuff through the chat, but nobody read it. As I sent them the state statutes, because they had issues with. You know, they had issues with, uh, oh, the contractors to be on site when you're doing shorelands. Shoreland work, yeah, and I was like, that's required. They're like, well, that's too restrictive. I'm like, no, that's what the state says. We have to follow that, we can't change that.
And we finally got there.
Right. But I, 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 I was trying to put, I posted the actual link in the chat and I was like, hey.
Second meeting, I don't even think they even brought it up.
No.
How about the cluster development?
No, it, it'll all explain, and the only, I think the only thing that really came up was when Shannon asked about. Do they, do we?
Septic systems.
We need to take it back to the board for the thousand versus five thousand. Went quite smooth. So anyway, I wanted to make sure you all understood that, what that was about, if indeed you observed it. That, uh, we made that decision to do that. Um, and I don't think there's any action necessary in our path to. Deal with that. So we're looking forward to that, thank you. We're looking forward to that being approved and becoming official document. And what Dawn and I talked about was. Uh, at that juncture, that we would also share it. We, we have clean copies for everybody, but we would also share it with the zoning board of appeals. Could we change quite a bit in it in terms of setback, what they deal with, so. That's your attempt, but we didn't want to do it until. They approve.
It's not approved until DEP approves it. Even though the council. You guys have proved it, it just doesn't become approved until DEP says it's good.
And as soon as we get, we'll get those copies out, both boards.
I'm all over the place.
Well, it's weird to look at two different versions.
Yes, exactly.
Strange, yeah.
And we still have to follow this version until that one's approved. And that's also, I'll bring up to Dawn again, um. This is an opportunity to make that document five oh eight compliant. Which is something that Jim has brought up multiple times, and this is our primary document that. And that's what I think we should, you know, if, if any of the ordinances need to go through that compliance, this should be it.
And, and Dawn is.
Right. Yep.
And, uh.
Well, it's sweet, I mean, I don't know if she's talked to you about the codification, and that's a big deal in codification, so. If they, if they decide to go through that, they will all be compliant, everything, everything on. Every ordinance will be.
And the ordinance was one of, was part of her priorities.
Right, I just, that's just something I wanted to make sure to state, because I know that'll come up. So Jim's brought it up multiple times, it'd be nice. Get at least that one started with. Because I know the process is not easy and we have some really old ordinances.
Sure do.
And we talked about, you know, do we want to update them as we?
Yep.
Or review, revisit them. Um, because we know one of the big challenges like subdivision is, you know, got some errors in it that we should probably, it's thirty years old. We probably should think about doing some updates to it.
Yep. Oh, yeah, it's at least thirty, I bet, yeah, ninety-four.
Now, uh.
Last of revision, yeah, yep.
Moving down the agenda. Dawn did share Greg's work he did on the window into the process. Do you all have that?
Yeah, so just so you know, what I did was. I said, if you're coming to the town, I mean, the idea behind this is a business owner would come in. Take this document, it'd be a cheat sheet to help them navigate our order. That's the idea. Um, because we specific, specifically use commercial use, low, medium, high, and it's defined in the document. I'm not going to define it in the cheat sheet. I'm just defining in the cheat sheet where they would go to get the answers. So, you know, this is it, it's a little one-page guy. Um, and basically it starts off, I've got a disclaimer in there. You know, this is not saying it's replacing the ordinance, all it's saying is we're using the ordinance and it's a help, it's a guide to help you use the ordinance. So you start off by basically saying, okay, if this is a commercial project. And it's, check the definitions, is that type of property defined? If it's defined, it probably has its own section you have to follow. If it's not defined, then it's going to be into that other commercial, low, medium, high.
Right.
So then you would go and review the definitions of low, medium and high and see where you think your project falls. And then once you've defined that, then you're gonna use that to go. And you're gonna get, figure out what zoning area you're in, and is that allowed and what approval do you need? Does that go to Mark? Does that go to the planning board, or is it not allowed? Those are basically your three options. So, and then after that, you could say, okay, if you're outside of the shoreline zone, you just use table two. If you're inside the shoreline zone, you have to off shoreline zoning.
Yep.
Yep. So again. What?
If you did say if it's outside the shoreline, we have a step five, and then it's inside the shoreline. Blah, blah, blah.
I could, that, yep, very.
There's no new, no new commercial activity inside.
Right.
Shoreland zones.
Right, you can't, you can't do it.
Unless it's water dependent.
If you look at our table, it's not allowed.
Hundred percent, has to be water dependent.
If you are inside the shoreline zone. Not have.
Yeah, well, if you go to that table, it says no.
Okay.
If you go to table two, it says no, it says, oh, you can't do that.
That's, that's one of the things with codification, when you do that online, if you punch in. Commercial use or high impact, it goes to every portion of the ordinance that has high impact, so you don't have to.
Right, it's for you, yeah.
It's super nice, but I don't know how close beyond that is. I hope. We've been talking about it.
But I know it, it. It's hard and. It also creates a very tough system to update.
It actually doesn't, it's, they do it for you, yeah, they do it for you.
Okay.
Just codification, the companies will do that, and you, you can. Some of them, it depends, some of them you can do quarterly, some you can do on your own, and then they annually do maintenance. It's, it's pretty cool, I mean, it's. It's, it's very nice if we could get it done.
So where do you see that?
What's that?
Where do you see that, what you're describing?
Codification, so that's, there's different companies that do that for us, or would do it for us if we go that direction. And they basically go through every ordinance that we have, and they.
They link them in everything, so it's essentially.
Exactly.
We don't have that, but.
Right.
We don't yet, we're trying.
If you've ever been on a web page and reading down and you see blue links all through it. That's essentially what it would do.
Yeah.
So that if you say, oh, anywhere it says high commercial use, it would take you to those high commercial use places.
And, and these are, yeah.
That definition, so it's, it's every time it's used those terms, like everything in the definition that's defined. You click on that and it takes you to the definition, tells you what our definition is.
Yep.
So it's, it's, it's a good way to do it, but you really have to use a company.
Yes.
To make any changes, because if you make a change, it's a domino effect. It's all these hyperlinks that are going to break.
Yeah.
So, and they've built this in, so.
And it's not, it's pretty reasonable. Annual, annual re, uh, fee is not, is, it's really reasonable. Um, and it's nice, because everything is compliant, you know, A D A, or whatever they call that.
Five oh eight compliant.
Five oh eight compliant, everything is, it's.
Well, and it's probably going to be very easy for them to push out any new state ordinance, any new state guidelines. And it would, boom, there it is. And we just insert it and follow the state guideline. So it would be, yeah, as long as it's cost effective.
Right.
That's my only, you know, I'm a taxpayer too.
Yep.
It's, well, it's a cost and.
So relative to this.
Be very cost effective.
You're completely going through this, right? Any, anything that you see to add here, or?
I mean, well, that was, that was sort of the question is, you know, can you use this? I, I, I did a couple of Don's examples that we brought up, and said, followed this and said, I could come up with an answer. But I already know the answer when I read the question, so that's not entirely fair.
I think a lot more sense. I think it makes sense, because it gives people something to start with and work with.
Right, our, our ordinance is not, yeah, our ordinance is not very clear, and it starts off with something simple, is if your use is defined, go read it. Go listen to what that, that use is defined, then it's defined.
And it gives you pages, like, or.
I, I would put pages in, but unfortunately, right. I have all the links for the ordinances that we have that are not.
It gives me.
If you're cannabis, you need to go to the cannabis ordinance. It's not in this ordinance. So you have to know, and there might be other ones I'm missing. I didn't think so. I searched them all. But I could have missed something. I mean.
It, it may not apply, but the one we heard tonight, um, the one we just got done. Turtle, Turtle Road.
Turtle Run.
Turtle Run Road. Let's try that.
Yeah.
So you, you're saying step one, review the definition section of the ordinance.
Right, there'd be condominiums.
Okay.
You know, that's what I would call this, would be a condominium.
But I don't know that we have a section in our ordinance.
We don't, we don't. So it's going to be.
Then now you're, yeah, signing back.
But it's a question, is this commercial?
Right.
I don't know if this, a condominium is residential, it's not commercial. So I think in my mind, we would move immediately away and say it's not commercial. You could do it for the marina and say that's commercial. Well, it, it, you could argue it is now, but when it moves to.
Residential.
To condominium, it's not. It's now straight residential. It's actually moving away from commercial.
So where will that take us then?
So it would basically say, if this doesn't apply, you'd go to straight residential.
But more subdivision than?
It, it would be, it would be.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and again.
Would take you right off this map.
It would take you off it, because this is again per commercial.
Excellent.
Well, but you could do the marina, which would be very complicated, and, and this is, this is getting back to the same point I was making to Dawn, which was, she kind of had the mindset of, we want to define everything, and I'm telling you, black and white, you cannot define everything. And my fear is if we try to put all those definitions in, we're going to define some things wrong. And if we define them incorrectly, like, okay, they're going to build a telecommunications center. What is that? Is that a server farm? Is that a phone warehouse? Is that an internet provider? Is that my son's computer cluster in my basement? How do I define that? How is that used? He's selling time on his server, my son is. How does that all of a sudden become a service, and now we have to deal with commercial, and now we have to deal with, now that's telecommunications. How, how do we define these things can really put ourselves in a pickle? In my mind, because I don't think we can define what the future's going to look like.
Well, uh, what I must suggest, uh, I don't think we have it. I saw it, Dawn had it. It was a logic diagram from another town.
Yeah, but that was, that was going back specifically with, uh, the site plan.
Yeah.
So, and I'm not opposed to, you know, we talked about this too, putting examples of projects to help people, like paperwork we would want. And you know, different than the Stanley Road project today. What do we want in our package? Let's give them some examples. So they know, hey, we want a drawing that shows how far are you off the property line? How far off, where's the building in relation? Yeah, you're way away from it.
Yeah.
E- exactly, that's, we want, we want to create some of those, but that would be again, in my mind, kind of like this document, which is, I would consider a non-regulatory document. There is no ordinance here. This is a guidance document. Very simple, very separate, so we'd have some guidance documents, which would help give people some examples. So if they're going to go add on to their, their waterfront home, they're going to build a subdivision, they're going to do something. We have some way to communicate that to them. And not, go read the ordinance and figure it out, because usually when they do that, they come in and it doesn't, it isn't what we look for, what we wanted.
So can I suggest that we, uh, table this from now, and when Dawn's back with us, further discussion, that's where we want to go.
Right. Again, I mean, to me, it's like, do we create a guidance document section? And create some kind of a, you know, on our town webpage, and just say, this is, these are intended for guidance. They don't change any of the ordinances. They're non-regulatory products. They're just supposed to be help. They're tools.
Um, looking at, uh, down the list of, twenty-four conference plans, what we'd like to do in a future meeting is, you all have a, it's a blue highlighted document of conference plan that's specifically last.
Yep.
Um. What I'd like to do is facilitate a, a quick process where each board member will put down their four priorities and rate them.
Now, we sent those to Dawn.
He has it.
I sent mine like a month and a half ago.
Okay.
So, but one thing I said.
What a while.
Yeah, it was maybe two months ago. It was a while ago. But I, you know, what I would like to do is, I would like to propose is, okay, we're going to all put ours down, make a list, and then we vote on maybe the top two we're going to deal with this year. I don't want to have a list of twenty-five things that we're going to try to cap, capture this year.
That's when I said the.
We can't be an administrative board for the town. We can help and we can guide, but let's pick the top one or two things that we want to work on from that list, and that's all we do.
And what I, what I was suggesting is that we would do a quick, a quick, uh, process where we'd put down our priorities and rate them.
Yep, and well, that might be if five of us pick, you know, or if, if it's on that list, if five of us pick that as being on our top five, that's probably going to end up being number one.
That's right.
So that's.
And that, and that, I'll facilitate that process.
Right, and anything on the list, we can go down through and say, why did you pick that, you know, quickly, give us a sentence or two of why you picked that one. Why that's important to you. And we might have different perspectives, but that might be also influencing ourselves. You know, if Betty's like, I'm really excited about this for this reason, I'm like, I didn't even think about that. That's a good thing. Maybe we should talk about that.
Exactly.
But I, I.
Not a bad idea, because a lot of them, I'm like, yeah, that's.
E- exactly, but it's, it's an interpretation, right? It's an interpretation. I just want to be clear that I do not want to try to tackle twenty things. Because I think that'll, that's just, that's the death. The death of the process, right?
I'm with you.
Yeah.
They would like to get us to four items with a priority on them, and we go to work on one and go down the list.
I mean, the, the complaint is a suggestive document. It's not policy, it's not. Um, I mean, for me, if you want to ask my opinion, lot sizes is something we need to think about.
Who?
Lot sizes, sizes of our lots. Not in every zone, but in certain zones.
Well, we did discuss that pretty heavily when we were doing the ordinance update.
Yep.
And I think we ended up with enough differences in our opinions that we ended up leaving it pretty much the same.
We had a lot of discussion.
We had, we, we spent at least several hours talking about that, and we did not agree as a planning board. Um, and we waited on the comp plan, and they didn't really, they provided some insight, but not as much as you would have thought.
That's something.
We, that's in the ordinance. Our, our reduced size for cluster development is in the new ordinance. That got approved, so that, that one, that one will be part of the update. I, I guess, I gotta go back and find my email.
Got four. And then rate them, one through four, and weight them, one through ten. So what they'll do is give us a score. Let's say somehow, somewhere, we get, we all get the same six. You're four and Dawn, two are Dawn, they overlap. And then we go to the priority, uh, the value that we put to them. That will help us get to that point, Greg's heart.
Right, we just, there's a.
Little exercise.
Yeah, there's a hundred things on that list. We can't do them all.
The other piece of it is that we need to do service is, I think there's several items on that document that are done.
That's true too. There definitely are.
I think.
Yep.
I think we owe it to ourselves and whoever's managing, and I think, I think, uh, Anthony is managing that doc, which, as I understand it.
Okay.
And so just give that feedback. These are done.
These are done, just say, no, we did.
This is a status.
We did the, we're done with those, yeah.
Oh, that's a quick exercise, I think. If we go through that, I think.
You're like, we did that.
Uh, it's.
Yep.
Um, that agreeable?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Dawn.
Betty?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you. Jamie.
Thanks, Dawn, my.
Yes, and, and I'll talk to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
True review though.
Well, she'll usually send out a reminder with the agenda. As a reminder, we're going to bring our four items, and we're going to talk about them, so.
Okay, um, I think we've covered all the items that we wanted to at least inform ourselves of. Um. Relative to the agenda. Any other business?
Yeah. I, I do, training. So next Thursday is, um, erosion control or non-point source pollution class with main D E P, John McLean. You all are invited.
Where is it? The fire station?
It'll be at the fire station. Actually, you went.
What's that again? Oh, I got it right here. It's.
Thursday, the nineteenth, yep.
Um. At what time?
Eight to four, eight to three, eight to two, depends on how quick he gets it done, but.
Does it work?
What, I, it's up to you. I mean, there's lots of things. I mean, if you remember, and there's changes in there, there's, you know, their best management practices. It's, 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 doesn't hurt. I mean, I've taken it twice. I've hosted it. This will be the second, third time that I've hosted it. I've been there every time, and I learned something every time.
Sections at all? In other words, if you could only make half of it, the, the last half, go to another session, get the first half, or is it not construction?
Um, it's.
I think he does it in the same order, so you're probably.
Right, I mean, yeah, if you couldn't, right.
Yeah, if you had a conflict, I guess, would.
Yeah.
That would work.
I mean, it could, because some of them only do two half, do half, because they're in there for their, um, recert, not their full cert, so.
Which half do they do, the first half?
Usually they come in morning half.
No, because we're not actively practicing. If we want to be a sort of. Continued education.
We just did the one at the library that was required.
Yeah, well, we also did.
You noticed that.
Came in. We had dinner in here and had to listen to the lady from municipal. I couldn't help but be better. I'm sorry.[1688.11]